Good evening and welcome to the April 7th, 2025 work session meeting of the Haverhill Horsham School District Board of School Directors. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded. The opinions expressed by any member of the public do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Haverhill Horsham School District Board of School Directors and are solely those of the presenter. The Haverhill Horsham District Board hereby expressly disclaims any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public. We could please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Stone, could please have roll call?
Teresa Brown.
Here.
Tara Connor-Halston.
Here.
Susan Hunsinger-Hoff.
Here.
Maggie Kissner.
Here.
DJ Schultz.
Here.
Erin Stroop.
Here.
David Brown.
Here.
Jennifer Wilson.
Here.
Eight board members present.
Thank you. We're now going to move on to our presentations portion of the meeting. We have a representative with us from PSBA who will be presenting the great school's designation.
My name's Megan Orick and as you mentioned, I'm with PSBA. I'm pleased to be here on behalf of our staff, governing board, and the entire association to celebrate your school district as a great Pennsylvania school. This honor recognizes schools that demonstrate their commitment to academic rigor, community, resilience, and financial health. We applaud you for your dedication in all of these areas. Your students are both successful and challenged by your district's curriculum, which drives student engagement. Your innovative school programming, plus a variety of honors and awards to celebrate your student success, fosters a sense of belonging and connection to the school community. The robust extracurricular activities that are offered in your district help your students develop into well-rounded individuals. Your district demonstrates the importance of caring for students holistically through your emergency preparedness and mental health supports. While offering these many benefits for your students, you remain grounded in financial health through budget development, financial audits, and compliance and bid requirements. This achievement is an opportunity for your district to promote public education excellence within your community. Congratulations, and thank you for allowing me to be a part of such an important milestone at your school district. Today, I brought a box of swag for the board and gave it to Alicia prior to the meeting. What I'd like to do next is take a picture with the school board and the banner that recognizes your district as a great Pennsylvania school, and you can hang it anywhere that you see fit in your district so that everyone that passes by knows that you guys are a great PA school. Thank you.
Thank you. So if the full board could head down to the pit area and we get our picture taken? your review are the March 24th, 2025 Legislative Action Meeting minutes, and they will be on the agenda on April 28th, 2025 for approval. Now we move to curriculum committee. Ms. Susan Hunsinger-Hoff?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening. Over the next three months in our curriculum committee meetings, the district's curriculum team will present findings of their reviews of various departments. Each department throughout the district is reviewed on a six-year cycle, and this year they will share insights into business education, STEAM, and physical education and health. Tonight, Dr. David Weber, Director of Curriculum, will share a review of the Business Department curriculum. Throughout this academic year, Dr. Weber worked with the department faculty to review the scope of course offerings, their alignment with national standards, and best practices in business education. As a summary of their work, Dr. Weber will share key insights into their findings, as well as three recommendations the administration will consider based on their findings. Dr. Weber?
Thank you. Can you hear me? Hello? Hello? Thanks. So as Ms. Hunsinger-Hoff mentioned, this is the first of three reports that we'll give over the next few months. This one focuses on the business courses at the high school. We'll do the K-12 STEAM in May and the Health and PE review in June. I'm here tonight to give a short presentation which is intended to be a summary of the report. The longer report is available in Board Docs, will be available to the public following this presentation, and will be on the curriculum website tomorrow. This is the work that we do during the first year of the report, so this is intended to be just an overview of our assessment of our program status, work with our teachers to identify the needs of the program, and then making the recommendations to guide any curriculum revision, resource selection that we need to do in year two. So this report represents a pretty small review as our reviews go. In years past, we've done math reviews, ELA reviews. These are fairly large departments that are K-12 in scope. The Business Computer Information Technology Department has five teachers at the high school, and we split those teachers up among two reviews this year. The review that I'll do tonight was with a few teachers that really focused on what we might consider traditional business courses, things like accounting or financial literacy. The BCIT department, because of the way we structure things in Pennsylvania, also has a fair number of technology and computer science offerings, and that would be coding courses like Python or AP Computer Science. Because we are doing the STEAM review as well this year, we wanted the continuity of having some of our teachers that are invested in teaching those computer science courses at the high school working in alignment with our teachers at the K-8 level that are delivering our technology education in STEM classes. So we took those teachers and divided them among two reviews. Someone asked me the other week, does that mean we're splitting the department up? No, it does not. We will continue to have a business department just recognizing the individuals in that department and the differing aspects of the courses that they teach. We split them up among two concurrent reviews this year. So I would like to offer my gratitude to Department Chair Dave Sowers and high school teachers Tammy Van Steenberg and Ted Mulroy for helping me put this business course review together for this evening. So just a quick overview of what's in the report. We'll start with a K-12 curriculum snapshot, which in this particular report really just focuses on the business elective offerings at the high school. There are elements in the PA state standards that are K-8 business. We cover some of those in our Family Consumer Sciences, our Career Education Work Standards, and other subject areas, but the bulk of the standards for BCIT are aimed at the high school. Those standards have been in place since 2012. One big addition to those standards that I'll talk a little bit about tonight is some brand-new, as of finalized in December 2024, standards for personal finance. I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. We looked also in the report at some enrollment trends in our courses. Our business courses at the high school are all elective in nature, and in that report you'll find three years' worth of data that shows some of the trends and shows the more popular electives, as well as some of the courses that were identified as areas of need that we want to work on. The report concludes with an overview of needs and recommendations, and I'll review those recommendations specifically later in the presentation. Last school year, we gave an update to the Board Curriculum Committee on what at the time was some fairly new information about the personal finance course requirement in the state of Pennsylvania. There were still some unknowns at that time, which have since resolved themselves, so I want to just talk to you a little bit about what that personal finance course will involve. And first of all, Act 35 of 2023 requires all high schools in Pennsylvania, public and private, to provide a personal finance course during the high school years. The law stipulates that that must be a half-credit course offering, or the equivalent of a half-credit course offering. The general topics that will be covered by that course include personal finance fundamentals such as income, spending, saving and investing, risk and insurance, and credit. And along with the legislation, schools recognize, I think the state recognized, that the Business Computer and Information Technology Certificate has really waned in terms of the number of folks that are graduating with that certificate from Pennsylvania colleges. It can be really hard to find teachers with that certificate, so there is flexibility in the legislation that allows this particular course to be taught by several other certificates. The most notable ones for our school district would be that high school math teachers, high school social studies teachers, and Family Consumer Science certificate holders could also teach the personal finance course. So this has been a popular subject in the public. I've had a lot of parents and students opine to me in the past few years that this should be a required course. PA has passed that law at this point. We have had a course here for a long time called Personal Finance. It has been an elective course, so folks that have opined to me that we should have a course, I was always happy to say, we do. It's not mandated until now. In 2026-27, this will become a requirement for us, as it will for all other PA school districts. That financial literacy course that we've offered, as you dive into the report, you'll see that's one of the most popular business offerings that we have. It has been for a long time, has not waned in popularity over the years. That is a one-credit course, so it's in credit terms a bit more than what the state's requiring at this course, but it does cover basically all the topics that are now required under the new PA standards for personal finance. So just to give you a sense, there has been a national trend towards adopting a personal finance requirement. On this particular map, as of 2025, this year states in dark blue are states that have in place a requirement for students, high school students, to take a personal finance course. Those states in light blue, including Pennsylvania in the upper right, are states that are in progress with that. Pennsylvania will be dark blue, starting with the 2026-27 school year, when all schools are required to have the new personal finance requirement in place. So with that, I want to bring you to the recommendations portion of the report, and this really guides the work that we'll do with the department next year and in subsequent years. The first recommendation is in a few parts, and it is around the new personal finance requirement. We have to do the work of developing the curriculum for a half-credit course. That is something that I'll engage in with our business department. We have to then revise the existing one-credit financial literacy course. It does meet just about all the requirements that it needs to from the standards perspective, but we'll double-check that. And then we'll need to do some work to delineate for students what the difference between a half-credit and full-credit option would be at that point. And we do have some work still to do with our district and school administration to finalize aspects of this decision. Some of that includes how exactly this will impact our current graduation requirements, and then we also, under the state guidelines, have the flexibility to have this requirement met by a few different courses. So for example, I just described, we'll develop a half-credit course. We can keep our existing one-credit financial literacy course in place. We also have the flexibility to develop courses in other areas such as social studies or math that would be personal finance courses, but would incorporate elements of those departments as well. With a math review on the horizon beginning next year, that's certainly something that we could take a look at, but the immediate work involves developing that half-credit option to be available, not next school year, but the following school year for students, and then to revise our existing one-credit course so that it continues to meet those requirements and makes it clear to students what additional content would be part of the one-credit option. There are two other recommendations that are specific to needs that the department identified. In the past few years, they've seen an increase in freshmen and sophomores enrolling in business courses. That's a great thing. Many of them choose to enroll in the Introduction to Business elective. That's a great course for them. They've seen a trend of students looking for additional courses. One of the courses that they've gone into is called Pathways. This is a course that really has been intended for junior and senior-level students who may have a little bit more knowledge or information or ideas at that point about the types of careers they might want to pursue, how to start saving, how to plan for college, and things like that. It's really not a great fit for freshmen in particular, so the department would like to explore developing an elective beyond the Pathways offering. It might be better suited to meet the needs of some of our younger students that want to pursue more business courses at the high school. The third recommendation is around a course called Retail Management. That course has been in place for a long time. It's a half-credit course. In the past, a lot of the bulk of that course involved the students in taking hands-on management of the school store. Over time, aspects of the school store have been moved over to things like online stores. Some elements of the retail have gone to other programs in the building. The Retail Management course, for the first time in a while this year, did not run. It ran as a single section in each of the two years previous to that. I think the department understands that it's time to take a look at that course and either update it to make it a little bit more relevant and refreshed, or the other option that we're open to is taking a look at maybe developing a new course that would take the place of that one in the curriculum. So that, again, would be work that we would engage in next year during the curriculum rewrite process. So I talked a little bit about next year. Our next steps focus on curriculum revision and resource review. I mentioned the immediate beginning of the writing of the personal finance course curriculum, and then the work that we still have yet to do as a district to determine some of the impacts, such as when students or how that would impact graduation requirements, when students would take it, and we will almost certainly need to lean on certificates beyond the BCIT cert to staff the teaching of that course for all students when it comes into place. So we still have a few decisions to make on that front. And with that said, I'll conclude the summary of the report, which again is available in Board Docs and will be available online on the Curriculum Department page tomorrow, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, I just, my question was regarding your last recommendation about updating that retail course. If the enrollment was so low, why would we even put effort into that?
Well, that, I mean, that was part of the conversation, right? So the option there would be to either, it has been felt for a long time that retail has a lot to offer kids in terms of the content of that course, but the, I guess you would say, the process of that course in years past has been managing the school store. Maybe that was part of the draw. Now that that's not happening, we, but you're right in a way. We have to make a decision about, do we want to somehow revive and refresh this course? Or might there be another direction, marketing or some other business elective that might seem more relevant to our younger students?
Dr. Weber, for the K-8 piece of this, would it be fair to say that personal finance is kind of embedded in the math program, or where in the curriculum would it be hit now?
In a few different places, actually. If you go into the personal finance standards, a new one, but also the BCIT standards, you'll see that they're kind of scattered. There are certain topics that aren't required K-2, 3 to 5, and certain topics that are. Some of them, you know, such as finding costs is something that's easily covered in some of our elementary math curriculum, but there's economic principles that are actually written into the social studies curriculum, K through 8. Our FCS program in the middle school does some personal finance aspects that cover some of the standards. And then we also meet some of the requirements through specific lessons that we do that are aligned to the Career Education and Work standards. So at the high school, you know, we point to our business department and say, that's where the business standards are getting taught. In elementary, it's a much more interdisciplinary approach, and it really is truly spread out over a couple of areas of content to meet those standards.
Thank you.
So you stated that there's a lot of interest in the community about the personal finance, and you're saying there's a lot of interest in the community regarding personal finance and the curriculum. As that gets evolved and more detailed, will we be sharing that at the Curriculum Committee meetings, at the work sessions?
Oh, yeah. There will be a lot more information on this forthcoming. As I mentioned, we have a couple of things that we need to settle before we roll this out to everybody, but yeah, this is going to impact every student at the high school starting '26-'27. It will certainly, I'm sure that we'll update you before December on this, but it will certainly, you'll see the courses appear as part of the Course Selection Guide in December. Councilors will be working to make students aware of the process and the course selections happening next year, and yeah, we will certainly do some additional work to make sure that this is publicized and communicated.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. Just wanted to add to that. Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Weber, but when we talk about the future reporting and implications on this, one of our considerations has to be the impact on the graduation requirements for students. The course, this course is obviously going to be a course requirement. What impact does that have on other graduation credit requirements by department through the high school experience? There will be future conversations around that because there, we always have to look at the big picture with that when making decisions around credit.
Dr. Weber, thank you. That was the only agenda item for tonight's curriculum committee.
Thank you. Now move to the Finance Committee. Ms. Brown?
Thank you. There's one item on tonight's Finance Committee agenda. Mr. Stone will be presenting a detailed overview of the '25-'26 budget. This review will be used for the proposed final budget that has to be voted on at the April Legislative Action Meeting. Prior to Mr. Stone's presentation, I'd like to refer the meeting to Dr. Ebbeslach.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you for that overview as well. Mr. Stone, our Director of Business Affairs, is going to be talking about the budget process as he has been throughout the last several months. We are getting closer to the proposed final budget in April to be voted on, but this discussion this evening speaks to the progress that we've been making at getting the budget in a good place. However, just a reminder that there is more work to be done, and this is not the final budget that we will be proposing in June, but the process is progressing nicely. So, Mr. Stone?
Thank you, Dr. Ebbeslach. Good evening, everyone. This is a similar presentation that we undertake each early spring as part of the budget process. We, as a reminder, start at a high level how we develop the budget, the policies that we follow as an organization. We dive into the details, and then at the end, we take a step back and review our financial position. As Dr. Ebbeslach mentioned, we are still two, more than two months away from approval of a final budget, so this is also an opportunity for the administration to identify areas to continue to refine and review for the remainder of the budget process. And so none of the assumptions in this proposed final budget that we'll be making a recommendation on at the end of the month are to be considered final. It just simply informs a required step in the PDE process for budget adoption. It may be a little easier for board members to follow along the document on their screens. We, like Dr. Weber in the curriculum presentation, this will be posted on Board Docs after the meeting is over for review. Our budget adoption process is guided by several district policies. We use a decentralized budget development approach, which means that there are administrators who are responsible for the development of their individual budget. They present that to central administration for review, which we then ultimately present to the board for approval. Like all school organizations and like all years past, we have a limited number of funds, but many requests, and we do our best to find the balance between operating the program at the continued high level that we seek and balancing that with the fiscal responsibility that we have for our taxpayers. We incorporate a long-term planning approach as part of our budget process, thinking more than just for the upcoming year. We try to look at least for the next couple of years, and we also ask those individuals who are developing the budget to provide justification for their requests. So those are central aspects of how we conduct the budget process. The budget calendar that we follow is mandated by the state. We start in the fall, and we've completed the items on the first page, and I've moved into what we refer to as Phase Three of the budget development process, which is where we're doing the detailed review and ultimately the community input on the budget, which will happen this month, and then in June when we recommend a final budget. Here are the, there are the last few items, which again, proposed final budget recommended at the end of this month, and then we come back to you in June with a final budget that ultimately is approved on June 16th. So our budget priorities are the way that when we look at our budget development process, these are our guiding principles. That graphic should look familiar. It is from our comprehensive plan. We apply the same strategy with budget development as we do in the classroom. So we think about the student at the center, and how do we build a budget that focuses on that and fulfills the objectives around those students. All right, so now we can dive into the numbers. This first, mouse has a mind of its own, forgive me. This executive summary- The budget calendar that we follow is mandated by the state. We start in the fall and we've, we've completed the items on the first page. And I've moved into what we refer to as Phase Three of the budget development process, which is where we're doing the detailed review and ultimately the community input on the budget, which will happen this month and then in June when we recommend a final budget. Oops, excuse me. Here are the, there are the last few items, which again, proposed final budget recommended at the end of this month. And then we come back to you in June with a final budget that ultimately is approved on June 16th. So our budget priorities are the way that when we look at our budget development process, these are our guiding principles. That graphic should look familiar. It is from our comprehensive plan. We apply the same strategy with budget development as we do in the classroom. So we think about the student at the center and how do we build a budget that focuses on that and fulfills the objectives around those students. All right, so now we can dive into the numbers. This first, mouse has a mind of its own, forgive me. This executive summary is for our expenditure budget. It shows the approved budget for the current fiscal year, 2024, 25, compared to the proposed final budget for 2025, 26, and then shows increases and decreases in terms of both dollars and percentages. It shows the budget by major objects, which we'll review in more detail later. But I'll share globally that the expenditure budget is proposed to increase 3.32% or $4.4 million year over year for 2025, 26. This budget document, we call Budget Document Number One. It shows at a high level our revenues by source and our expenditures by function. The main item that I would like to highlight here on this report is that, like prior years, the administration is bringing forward for consideration in April for the proposed final budget, a balanced budget where revenues equal expenditures. And we are able to accomplish that balanced budget with a real estate tax increase that would be at or below the state's Act One index. We have more than two months until the final budget, so I'll just reiterate that although the proposed final budget must include a recommended tax increase, that's not the final recommended increase that we will be presenting in June. Our revenues, our revenues are projected to increase about $924,000. That is before any real estate tax increase. I'll show you how we calculate that amount at the bottom. That's about a .7% increase. And we're going to review the revenue details a little bit later in the presentation. The expenditures on this chart are organized by function. And if you think about functions as the programs that we operate within the district. The more detailed way to look at the budget, which we will review in a few pages, is through the object level. Those are the items and services that we purchase through the budget. And so when you look at a programmatic view of the budget, you see that salaries and benefits for each of those functions are included throughout. So you see many of those functions are increasing. That's because salaries and benefits are typically our largest increase in the budget. And you see salaries and benefits across all of our programs. You'll also see, as we are often required to reallocate and reclassify certain expenses within the budget due to generally accepted accounting principles, I'll identify some of the areas where we've had to move expenses from one line to another in order to comply with, with gap. Down at the bottom of the report, you see that there is a shortfall between revenue and expenditures of approximately $3.5 million. And that is the amount that we are able to, we are able to cover that shortfall through a real estate tax increase at the Act One index of 4%. So that is how the budget is balanced at this time, through a 4% real estate tax increase. Following this approach is consistent with the long-term fiscal strategy that the district has adopted since the inception of Act One. And again, we'll revisit how that strategy has worked for the district over many years towards the end of the presentation. So we're moving now into a more detailed view of the revenue budget. And the revenue budget is broken down into four segments. The first segment is our local revenue. It's the largest portion of our budget. And that revenue budget is expected to increase by approximately $7.3 million. The top line item there shows the revenue that's generated from, changed from fiscal year 24, 25 to 25, 26 in real estate taxes. You'll notice that that number is slightly different than the number that I showed on the last slide. That is because the district also benefits from assessed value growth in the community, and that accounts for additional revenue. The local revenue line items are increasing compared to the prior year. That is consistent with the trend that we have seen over a number of years with local revenues. Our earned income taxes, real estate transfer taxes, and interim real estate taxes have increased over the last several years. And so we are still budgeting conservatively, but are recommending increases to those line items to more appropriately match the trend that we are seeing in local revenues. The next section is state revenue. And I'll point out two items there. The basic education subsidy and special education subsidy, as has been our practice, are budgeted to equal the amount that we are receiving in the current fiscal year. So we are not budgeting for any increase in state aid. Although the governor has proposed increases in state aid, it's been our practice to wait until that budget is adopted before any funds are incorporated. And that typically happens after we have to adopt our budget. So that is why you see us coming in at the same number that we are receiving this year. So that's why last year we followed the same approach, and so on and so on. You also may notice a reduced allocation in the line item entitled Safe Schools. This is the line item where the Commission for Crime and Delinquency has been funneling physical security and mental health grants in years past. They reduced the allocation to school districts across the board this year. So that's why there's a lower amount projected for the upcoming year. Federal revenue is the next section. And the federal revenue line item has certainly been in the news of late. Our numbers are based on our current allocations that we are receiving in 2024, 25, similar to the approach that we take with state funding. There's no increase, nor is there a reduction in state funding on this line item. Any change that you see is because our current year allocation has changed. You also see an increase to what's known as access funds. This is Medicaid reimbursements for students with disabilities. We are planning to draw more funds out of our account for that line item, again, to match with an increase in the amount of money that we've been receiving in that allocation. The last line item in this budget, fund transfers, are both decreases, which although not typically associated with favorable news when you look at a decrease in revenue, I interpret this information as positive for the overall fiscal health of the district. The first line item, the single largest change in the revenue budget, is a decrease of $2.6 million in the fund. Many of the expenses here, they are related to our special education programming. And we budget based on our current service profile for students with special education needs. And we are seeing some decreases in some of those line items due to students aging out of the program, not because of programmatic reductions, simply because we will not have to serve as many students in those lines. And you also see an increase for our line item for substitute, long-term substitute, and paraprofessional staffing costs. The next group of accounts, property services. This is down because of, we are no, no longer budgeting for the need for contracted custodial cleaning because we are right now at full staffing. And so we're pleased that, that that is the point we are at. But we're, since we are no longer anticipating the need for that, we are not carrying that budget. I also mentioned classification changes for accounts. This is one of the areas where you're seeing a change in the accounting for leases. We used to account for these leases in the 400 objects. We are now required to account for them in the 900 objects. So you see a rather large decrease in leases, and you'll see an offsetting increase in the 900 object. Other services at the bottom of this page, these are showing a slight increase, about 1.3%. This group of accounts includes charter school tuition payments, which are up for the, projected to be up for the upcoming year. Our insurance costs, which are also projected to be up. This is a temporary increase because we will have for the next, most of the next year, two Keith Valley Middle Schools that we must insure. So even though the building is about to be demolished, we have to insure it until it is. Once it is demolished, you can be assured that I will be calling the insurance company and letting them know that we need a credit for the remainder of the year. This line item also includes contracted special education tuition and contracted transportation costs for our students that require those services. Moving to the next page, our supply line item. There's a ra, rather large increase in the electricity line item. We are expecting a, an increase to what's known as the capacity charge from PJM, which is the electrical grid. They're passing that on to all customers, commercial and residential. And we're expecting about a $300,000 increase in our electricity costs as a result of those increases that are being passed down to us. You also see in this area our supplies that we need to operate schools as well as curricular resources and software costs. The next grouping is our equipment line item. The major increase in this line item is due to the need to replace an additional school bus and school van. So our typical cycle is, in the budget, is one school bus and one school van in each cycle. As we've looked at the replacement schedule, we've got a couple of vehicles that their needs have accelerated our need to, to purchase more than the, the typical one bus and one van. So we've increased that line item to do two buses next year and two vans. The last two groups I'll, I'll consider together. The biggest line items in here are our debt service costs. I mentioned that the Keith Valley Project debt is now fully phased in and included in there. And you see the offsetting increase to that decrease that I mentioned about the lease accounting. Okay, the last way we're going to look at the budget. Sorry about that. This thing is very sensitive. We look at our budget by departmental cost center. So I mentioned that we use that decentralized model of developing the budget. And these are the administrators that are responsible for the various budgets. On that first line item, I'd just like to point out the administration line item. We are anticipating a recommendation from the district's Artificial Intelligence Committee. And we are carrying a placeholder in our budget for a recommended platform that will be used in our schools. So stay tuned for that recommendation forthcoming. Any place that you see a school name that is, that budget is governed by a per pupil allocation. So as student enrollment and student population changes are factored in, there, the individual budget line items change. So although you may see some increases, some decreases, it's because the per pupil allocation formula is a function of not just purely student enrollment, but student needs. If a school sees an increase in students with special education needs, their budget is adjusted accordingly. The business office budget carries the debt service, charter school tuition, insurance, many of the items that nobody cares to speak more about in a budget presentation except for me. The federal programs line item might, may look peculiar, because it is being zeroed out. That again is not because we are eliminating federal programs or because we are not receiving federal revenue. It's a twofold function. We've shifted our federal dollars into the salary and benefit line items, which show in the personnel budget. And this budget also carried the remaining ESER funds last year, but those have expired. So any of the other programs that were in there, they are no longer funded by ESER, and so they are being funded by other budgets within this, within the overall budget. The personnel salaries and benefits line item is the single largest. That is all of the salaries for administrators, professional staff and support staff, as well as the associated fringe and healthcare benefits. Human resources budget is, the primary item in there is our costs associated with ESS for per diem and long-term substitutes. The operations budget, I mentioned the increase in electricity. That's offset by some other reductions that we've made in the operations budget to help accommodate that. Security is showing a rather large decrease. The reason for that is, again, Mr. Carrigan used to have contracted security guards. And last year, we made a recommendation to reduce the overall number of guards, but to hire them as district employees. That has been a successful recommendation. So the costs for that have transferred from security into the personnel budget. Lastly, I'll point out that there are a number of planned infrastructure projects in the technology budget. And you'll also see that there are two new budgets or newly identified budgets for athletics. Those are split out from the Keith Valley and high school allocations. They are not additional funds. They were funds that were included in the Keith Valley and high school budgets in years past. So it's, again, not that we are now just for the first time funding athletics. We were funding them in a, in a different place. But we've found it more administratively beneficial to separate them out and track them separately. So now having gone through the details, we'll take a step back and review some of the higher-level financial aspects of the budget. Again, this, this graph we show during most of our budget presentations, it shows the millage rate history from the 2001, 2002 school year through 2024, 25 for the school districts in Montgomery County. Hattborough Horsham is the red bar towards the right side of your graph there. And this is showing that average percentage change in real estate taxes over that time. So over the 23 years here, Hattborough Horsham is at the lower end of that spectrum. And a reminder, the strategy around Act One, although it places, it, it places a limitation on the amount of revenue that can be raised through real estate taxes, it provides a disincentive for not raising taxes in a given school year because you do not have an opportunity then to come back the following year and request a greater increase because you're limited by what the state can put forward. So we just don't have the opportunity to do a few years of zeros and then a 10% increase. It's not available. That's why we have to do the, the slow and steady approach that we've adopted over the, over many years. This is a, the next page is a table representation of that graph showing the school districts in the county and the average percentage change in their tax rates over that period of time. This is a table of the tax increases since Act One has been adopted. So that, those previous slides showed tax increases before Act One and including Act One, which was 2007, 2008, was the first fiscal year where Act One came to being. And you see a, a long-term strategy of tax increases, never above the Act One index, always at or below the Act One index. And we've maintained that over this period of time. I'll point out that the Act One index for future years, 2026 and beyond, is projected to decline back into the 3% range. So it's kind of spiked up a little bit in the last couple of years. It's projected to come back down to more traditional levels. And lastly, a summary of our, our financial reserves, showing the various restrictions, commitments, assignments of fund balance in the General Fund, Debt Service Fund, and Capital Reserve Fund. So that is a very quick overview of a $136 million budget. But I'm certainly happy to take any questions that the board might have.
I have a question. With our fire insurance liability going up 42%, electric, equipment replacement, our rental under 6910 remains the same. So when we rent out the building, which costs more with our custodians and all of our facility services, we're not going to raise that amount to cover some of that?
So what we are going to do is, when Keith Valley opens this summer, is we'll be bringing a recommendation to revise our facility rental policy, which includes the fee schedule for those types of rentals. And it is something that we have, that we have to look at. Number one, because we have a new facility coming on, which will have new spaces for the community to rent. But also because we need to make sure that our costs are at least being covered for community usage. So yes, we, there's no increase recommended here because we don't have the, the policy in place to be able to calculate. because we don't have the, the policy in place to be able to calculate what that impact would be. So we want to adopt the policy before we then assess those charges.
Thank you.
I have a question. Did you say that next year we are budgeting for less guards? When you were talking about the security budget line? Have I said something about the guards?
Yeah, so what we did last year is we, we made a, a review. We had a review with Mr. Carrigan on our security coverage. We had not been having success with hiring guards through our agency. So we looked at the, the needs that we had and made a determination that we could, by adding two guards as district employees, we could fill two vacancies that we weren't able to fill through the agency. And so we were able to get two more guards in place. But we did that by then not hiring through the, the contracted agency. So it was a, a shift of the funds. We had other security guard positions that we, that had not been filled. And by, you know, eliminating those and filling them through district employees, we've gotten our staffing to the level where we needed to be.
Okay, so how many, how many guards do we have then, district-wide?
So I was just going to add to that. We're actually, we're in this budget, while that is a reduction reflected in Mr. Carrigan's budget. The personnel budget reflects an additional guard. We're adding an additional guard to our overall total to be positioned at, primarily at Keith Valley Middle School due to the expected use of Keith Valley, extended use, and the facility itself. So the total number of guards we have. Mr. Carrigan is coming up to provide his expertise.
Glad Mr. Carrigan is here. Thank you. We have four guards total, three here at the high school, one at KV. And we have a proposal in the budget to add an additional guard at KV next year for five total guards.
Okay, thank you. And then so since they're considered employees now, do they have, they have, I would assume, extra costs for them? Like pension and, and benefits and things like that?
I had, I had two questions. One, obviously, this is the preliminary. We're still working on sharpening the numbers to, to hopefully get it down a little bit. The second question was back to the gas and electric. Do we have the opportunity to negotiate with them for multi-year contracts to try to lock in rates to kind of try to offset some of these big increases?
Yes, and we do, we do do that. We have a purchasing group through Montgomery County IU. So all the schools together purchase electricity. And we're advised by a consultant who makes recommendations on how long to lock in for and at, at what rate. This is just unfortunately a, a, you know, a regulatory charge that, that we can't avoid.
It's happening everywhere. Just a question.
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
I have a question on page 12. Object 635, food. That goes up 58, almost 59%. But can we, can you explain what that, what that line item is? I can't imagine that that is for food services or breakfasts and lunches at school. But can you expand on what that is?
No, we have a, we have a pretty strict policy around food in the, in the district. It covers meals when our teams travel to sporting events or competitions. For example, percussion is headed to Dayton soon. Those are the costs of the meals associated with that. It's also the cost of any food that we have for large-scale district meetings, induction programs, things of that nature. So.
Okay, yeah, thank you. That's what I thought. Just to clarify, the food services that we have now, I don't really see it in the budget. So maybe you can help me understand that. I just want to reassure that our food services aren't, we're not planning on changing anything for next year, that the free and reduced meal programs are still available, and, and breakfasts and lunches will still be available at schools?
That, that is correct. The, the food service fund is separate from the general fund. It operates on its own. But we have every intention of maintaining the program at its great level. The only changes we're planning on making are adding new things to the menu.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are there any additional questions? And if there are no additional questions and no objections, the administration will prepare the required reports and present a proposed final budget for adoption at the April 28th Legislative Action Meeting. Thank you, Ms. Distin.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the Policy Committee portion of our meeting. Ms. Schultz?
Thanks. Good evening. You may recall that at our previous board meeting, we tabled a vote on a proposed revision to Policy 610 procurement based on a recommendation for further legal review. That legal review was completed with only a minor revision to the policy. Therefore, the administration recommends to reinstate Policy 610 for a first reading at our April 28th board meeting. And as a reminder, in conjunction with revising Policy 610, the administration recommends retiring Policies 611, 612, and 613 to create a more unified procurement policy. And I think it's, Dr. Avistaga, will you go through that one minor change? Or I can? It's up to you.
Well, I'm going to actually defer to Mr. Musa, who did the legal review of the policy.
Thank you.
Thank you both. We just had one minor change, and that was to insert the words "the next" in front of Legislative Action Meeting. So the idea under this policy is that the superintendent can execute a contract on behalf of the school district. And we just want to make sure that the board then approves that contract at the very next legislative meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that review. And does anyone have any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move that forward for a first reading at the next board meeting on April 28th. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to community input. This is the time for public comment on agenda items or any matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may or may not be before the board. Community input is governed by Policy 006. Those interested in speaking during this segment of the community input are asked to register with the Board Secretary using the sign-in sheet in the meeting room. Your name will be called in the order that it appears on the sign-in sheet. Once your name is called, please come to the microphone and state your name and municipality residence. Comments are limited to three minutes. It is not the board's practice to engage in dialogue with speakers. We don't have anyone signed up. Is there anyone here who would like to speak? Now we'll move on to comments from board members and superintendent. Are there any comments? Okay, then we'll move to adjournment. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved Tara Connor-Halston.
Second Teresa Brown.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.